Good morning. I called to order the June 15, 2017 business meeting and asked the County Administrator, Don Crupp, to please take the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning. We are joined this morning with Mr. Stephen Madcor, County Council, and then serving as your clerk of the board today is Kevin Moss. I'll go ahead and start the roll. Commissioner Humberston?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Commissioner Schrader?
Here.
Commissioner Savis?
Here.
Chair Bernard?
Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Also like to announce that the board will recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Housing Authority Board for the next item and introduce our Housing Authority Commissioner, Paul Reynolds, off to my left. Thank you for coming today and volunteering your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And ask the clerk to read the Housing Authority Consent Agenda by title.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have Resolution Number 1920, approving the Housing Authority of Clackamas County fiscal year 2017-2018 budget and approval to write off uncollectible accounts for the fourth quarter of fiscal year 2017, and that concludes the consent agenda.
Have any commissioners asked to remove any item from this consent agenda? And I'd ask for a motion?
I move we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Second.
Was that you can?
Yes.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing non-motion carries, and thank you for coming in this morning again.
Thank you.
See you next time. Now, I'll announce that the board will adjourn as a Housing Authority and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting, and this is the portion where we ask citizens to come up and talk, and we have one card, Les Poole. Please join us. How's the weather out there?
Little rainy, but summer's going to be here. I predict that by July 25th, summer will be here.
Okay.
Les Poole, I live in Gladstone. I'm going to go to Salem today and do what I can on Senate Bill 694, the exemption, tax exemption for the vets that are disabled. Right now, there's a lot of impasse down there because, as you all know, budgets are being made and then bills are being written that are asking for a tremendous amount of money. And I think if you talk to folks down there, one of the best things you can do is get them to compromise on the transportation bill. It's too big. They're trying to do too much. I think it's stuck, and that leaves us stuck, and that leaves Stafford Road 205, a number of places that need attention would be left in a position of limbo. I was talking with someone last night about, they asked me, what do the commissioners do? Interesting question, and I'm not a commissioner. But one thing that I shared with them is that the county is a corporation. It's incorporated. So like any business, there's a board, and there are people that they're working with, but not necessarily co-employees. And I think there's a lot of confusion about, now, what is the county really supposed to be doing? This isn't Salem. This isn't a Democratic or a Republican or Independent or Socialist or Communist or redneck place of business. And so I hope we just keep that in mind, because I got an interesting reaction when I shared that. I've got about a minute left, and the last thing I want to share is something that really has been troubling me, and it's not about the county, it's about our youth. When you lack direction, when you lack good examples, you learn from MTV, I'll probably get sued for saying that, you learn from your friends who don't know much, and you're pretty impressionable, and that can lead to a multitude of problems. And the other day is about 7:30 at night, I'm crossing, on 205, I'm crossing the Clackamas River, and I look over and I see a young teenager with his hands out above High Rocks, and his friends are sitting there laughing, and it's 7:30 at night, and it's getting a little late, and I'm thinking, what are they doing there at this time of day? And a few minutes later, he jumped in and drowned. I got to my meeting, and the next thing I hear is this tragic loss, and I thought back to Dani Countryman, and I'd like to close just with a little moment of silence for Dani Countryman. It's been 10 years ago since her 15-year-old life ended, and, you know, I'm starting to talk about the kids and about what's going on here, and that's more important than the politics and more important than all the gossip I hear about Trump. So I appreciate your time as always, and wish me luck in Salem. We need it.
Great, thank you, Les. And, you know, High Rocks has been a place where youth have died for many years. My brothers, I had one brother who used to go to High Rocks, the rest of us did not. He's still alive. Also, we got to thank AMR for the work they've been doing as lifeguards, which I don't think they work till seven at night, but they've saved a lot of lives, and that's part of the contract or a portion of the contract with the ambulance company is lifesaver services down at the High Rocks. But it has been a place where has been dangerous as long as I can remember. I'm sure it will be in the future, but got to thank, I mean, AMR for the efforts they make in saving lives. So the next item on the agenda is a public hearing. It's, I guess I'll let you introduce it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a public hearing to consider the second reading of Ordinance Number 05-2017, amending Chapter 8.02 Transient Room Tax of the Clackamas County Code and declaring an emergency, and Mr. Stephen Madcor will discuss this bottom with you.
Thank you, Administrator Crupp. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Stephen Madcor, County Council, presenting for the board's consideration this morning, Ordinance 05-2017, which is an amendment to Chapter 8.02 of the County Code, Transient Room Tax. We're changing the name to Transient Lodging Tax. We're also adding some housekeeping changes. We're also adding the definition of intermediary. The purpose of this code change is to capture the lost tax revenues from this new sharing economy of Airbnb, Vacasa, VRBO, things along those lines, where folks rent out their private homes on a short-term basis. Our current code currently has an exemption for that type of use. This amendment would allow for the taxing, the 6% tax, which is across the county, for hotels, motels, lodges, bed and breakfast, and things along those lines. This amendment allows for taxing the use of the homes in that manner. It also adds the definition that is more aligned with state law to recover taxes for RV use and campground use as well. There was some ambiguity in our code with those areas also. This clarifies that. Like I said, there's also some housekeeping aspects as well. We're getting rid of old, inapplicable definitions and things like that. We're declaring an emergency so it becomes effective immediately, so we can capture those taxes in the summer season. Otherwise, it would be a 90-day lag period. This would be the second reading of it. This has been considered by the board previously. We made some changes in the interim. We ask if the board approves it, that the clerk would just read it by title only, and then it would be, if passed, it would be effective immediately. And I'm here to answer any questions that the board may have.
Well, so this is not new business. This has been on the docket for a while. It was actually presented to the board in work session. It was also brought, it was originally on the agenda and moved to this date, while we actually had one hearing, and then it was moved on the agenda and moved to this date to finalize it. So it's been out there for quite a while.
You are absolutely correct, Chair Bernard. Initial policy session was on March 14th. We had the first reading on April 13th. It was bumped, it was scheduled for May 4th, but it was bumped to a later date. But yes, this has been in the works for quite some time, advertised, published, and discussed, absolutely.
So generally, does state law cover who's in a priority list or whose law overrides the other? The state law that allowed collection in certain circumstances? And you mentioned that our code was kind of vague in that area. Would the state law, which law would we look to?
If a county legislates in an area that is of county concern, the county code would control. If it conflicts with state law, state law arguably preempts the county from legislating in that area. But because we legislated in this, we had our own TRT code, and we couldn't default to state law because our code would control it. So we're trying to align ours more closely with state law now.
Okay. Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, I just want to just take this opportunity to capture a couple of things you said, and that was that, you know, this is obviously a tax, and there are, obviously, there are taxpayers paying this fee, and in this case, and I know that later on the agenda here shortly, we'll have the, probably have the Director of Tourism Department up here, and I'll ask her a question or comment. But my comment really basically is that I think that we need, you know, the interpretation of what those are to be used for and how they're done really has to be, really as inclusive and constructive as possible. I'm sure that people that are staying in RVs or all these different places in which we collect this have a certain activity that draws them to this region. So it would seem to me like if you're here and you want to, you are an outdoorsman and you're coming from a different area or state or county, 50 miles or more away, and, you know, you're staying in an RV park and you're paying a fee to recreate, whether it's fishing or whether it, whatever that activity is, that all of those things that generates interest in an overnight stay ought to be really part of the overall application of those revenues, these tax revenues that are collected, to enhance. There ought to be an enhancement of that. And I'm just concerned that it's really not really looked at as, or the taxpayer element of that and the purpose of which draws them in here is actually taken as collectively into consideration amongst the Board of County Commissioners and all those involved down the way that, you know, there are other activities, and to look at it simply as if there is or is not a return on investment is, I think, a consideration to some degree. But we also have to realize that, well, those people, what draws them here, and we're paying that tax, that they are the taxpayer, and they ought to get some value or enhancement for the monies that they're spending or being collected. It's a concept, it's not really a question, but I'm just throwing it out there, that the taxpayer is the taxpayer, and that, and we, as a Board of County Commissioners, are primarily responsible for those taxes. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
I will open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to testify on this matter. Mr. Poole, please introduce yourself and tell us where you live.
Hello, Les Poole, Gladstone. Just a question. Would this apply to the state parks like Maciver?
No.
I'm not trying to get too far into the weeds, but I didn't get a chance to glance at it. I'm just, you know, I understand what we're trying to do here, and I tend to agree with Paul's thinking, where the money goes matters, and we are increasing the costs, just like when you go to a motel, everyone complains, the cost is going up and up at the coast, but they're trying to enhance their economy by taxing tourism, and so I'm not opposed to it as much as I'm just kind of curious about better idea where the money goes, and does this apply to the state park?
Yes, it does.
Okay, interesting. I was just curious. Thank you.
Okay. No one else? I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I move we read Ordinance Number 05-2017 by title only.
Second.
It moved in second to read the Ordinance Number 05-2017 by title only. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing non-motion carries, and I'd like the clerk to read the ordinance by title only. And, okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Ordinance Number 05-2017, and Ordinance Amending Clackamas County Code, Chapter 8.02 Transient Room Tax and Declaring an Emergency.
Entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt Ordinance Number 05-2017, amending Chapter 8.02 Transient Room Tax of the Clackamas County Code and declaring an emergency.
Second. It moved in second to adopt Ordinance Number 05-2017, amending Chapter 8.02 Transient Room Tax for Clackamas County Code and declaring an emergency. I just want to make some, one comment. I believe that some of these organizations are actually collecting the tax already but not giving it to us. Isn't that true?
Hard to say. I know that Portland struggled with it. There has been, we've been working with the Airbnb folks, and we're coming up with an arrangement that moving forward, that they will collect it and disperse it, but I do not know. I've heard comments that people have been collecting it and not dispersing it to the county, which would be certainly problematic, but I don't, I can't verify that.
Okay, so all those, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. And do I need to, we don't need to actually word, need to word, oh, you already did the emergency.
Thank you.
All right, so the next item is a discussion item, and done.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We do have two public discussion items on the agenda today. The first one is from Tourism and Cultural Affairs, and it's consideration of approval of the Tourism Master Plan for 2017-2022, the strategic priorities. We have Danielle Cowan, Executive Director of Tourism and Cultural Affairs, here to present this to you.
I think you're over there, and you would be here, but... Is there a slideshow, right? Yes, there is.
We usually leave the slideshow thing over there.
This is on MedPalo. Okay, great. Well, thank you, Chair Bernard, and members of the Commission. My name is Danielle Cowan, and I serve as the Executive Director for Clackamas County Tourism and Cultural Affairs. As you know, it branded is as Oregon's Mount Hood Territory, and with me today is Kirk Mauser. He serves on the Tourism Development Council and is also Artistic Director of Stump Town Stages, and he serves on the Arts and Cultural Council as well. John Erickson, our Chair, had planned to be here today but got called away last minute for an unplanned board meeting at Merrill Hurst University, where he is heading up a new hospitality degree program in our own backyard. So that's a very important element, so sorry that he couldn't be here. We are pleased today to present our draft master plan for tourism for your approval and our five-year strategic priorities. It's been a culmination of work by the tourism team, our TDC, our partners, the public at large, and you, the Board of County Commissioners. We have been fortunate to be guided by the TDC, a group of nine industry and community leaders who have really empowered our staff to blossom into an award-winning team that have built strong relationships throughout the industry and serve in many leadership positions. And we have also doubled our revenue collections from visitors in the past six years or so. I appreciate their leadership, and those who represent the industry, tourism industry, heritage and culture, agritourism, outdoor recreation, and the public at large, they all serve on the Tourism Development Council. And I invite one of our council members, Kirk Mauser, if you have a couple of comments before we get to the main meat of our presentation.
Chair Bernard, Commissioners, thanks for having us here. Just real quick, we have a fantastic staff that works with the Volunteer Tourism Development Council. We're really fortunate to be guided in our decision-making. In addition, the nine appointed TDC members come with a variety of backgrounds, professional backgrounds, that enhance the process. I come from the arts and cultural world, which is an important element of tourism, and also very active in heritage, and just at our meeting yesterday, I just wanted to report some of the wonderful activities that are ongoing. The Heritage Capital Improvement Grant Program that we run through tourism just announced a $20,000 grant for Cascadia Center for the Arts for a riff on the Raven Studio. So it's little elements like this, just to improve, enhance existing heritage properties to make sure that they are ready for tourism, that they are visitor-ready, and to support our heritage arts and cultural organizations are something that are very, I'm very passionate about, and I'm happy to see the amount of effort and work. This is just one of many projects, of course, that we have supported over the years, but I thought I'd bring it to your attention since it's so fresh and as of just yesterday.
Great. Thank you. So let's turn to the PowerPoint, and we'll walk through the process and the changes before you. We're happy to take questions as you, as they arise, or if you want to wait until the end of the presentation, that works for me, too. So your preference. How's this, how do we make it? Oh, there we go. So a little bit about tourism. I'm sure the Board of County Commissioners are aware, but there are many in the audience who may not be, and I apologize, when I was sitting in the audience, looking at my printed script, I saw typo there, so I apologize. That's on there. So we're funded through a transient room tax, and that is what you were just discussing earlier in the first presentation today, and you can see there how our revenues have gone. We are projected to reach 4.6 million this year and probably close to 5 million in the upcoming fiscal year. We have the nine-member council that we discussed, and that work by county code, which you also just were referring to, it requires that a master plan be approved by the Board of County Commissioners. We have a current master plan, which is underway, and we'll go through some of the changes that we made, and we also have the Board of, the Tourism Development Council also puts together with us the five-year strategic plan, and we also, after that, put together an annual business plan. We drill down further and further into our work to make sure that we are delivering on the plan as you have envisioned it and as our board implements it. And we most definitely adhere strictly to the parameters of the state laws and the county code about how you may use tourism dollars. They are very restricted. You may not just use them for things that you think might be tourism. There is, as someone was asking earlier, about how, who's first and who's second in line, there are definitions in state law and requirements in state law for the use of these funds, and we are, and the Board of, the Tourism Development Council is very aware of those, and I serve in state leadership positions and frankly, national leadership positions on this issue. And so we have been considering, we haven't been considering, the state legislature this year has been considering some changes to loosen up some of those restrictions on the use of funds, as Commissioner Savis was inquiring about. However, those are not looking like they're going to make it further. They're looking for things for beautification and other uses not allowed under the law. We do abide by that very strictly. So as far as how we came across, came about with this plan, we, since last September, have been holding a number of sessions and other opportunities to engage with the public. We held four listening sessions that were held throughout the county, one in Welch's, one in Wilsonville, in Oregon City, I didn't have the list in front, and one in, help me out, Malala, I think it was. And so then we also posted our questions and solicited information on our website. We put it out in our multiple channels to have people comment. We received media coverage. This is a picture of the meeting in Wilsonville. What it doesn't show is all of the audience that was there. It was a very well-intended meeting, and we had lots of input from that. This is just a picture that happened to be on the cover of the Wilsonville spokesman. So what did we learn from all of that? I know this looks like, wow, overload, but it is a great graphic to help you understand our work. That's what it really looks like. And these are the ideas, we captured more than 100 ideas from our partners in these sessions, and these are some of the things that came out strong. And we tried to weight them a little bit about how much they showed up in people's comments, so you can see kind of where we are with that. It's a challenge to figure out now, how do we execute with these funds in a way that moves forward these initiatives? And so that's what this plan is about. We posted on our website once again, after we had an opportunity to put together a draft, again, we met with the Board of County Commissioners in a policy session and to review the initial results and input that we received and how we thought it should come together in a plan. We sought more input online after that, and we considered those and responses more by the TDC and the BCC to incorporate in the draft as you see it today. And just for, just for your information, to the right there is just a snapshot of what our website looked like on announcing and carrying forward some of these ideas to get our partners engaged. So what did we do with it? Well, we have a, the master plan is really a very brief document, as you will note, that was shared with you in the materials that you received prior to this, and the master plan really only engaged one major change, and that was the issue of sustainable tourism. One of the things that we have discovered, and it's not just us, it's happening across the country and certainly in Oregon, we're getting over-loved. And so we're trying to figure out, how do you deal with the over-loving of certain areas? And that is an important issue for the board. It's an important issue for our customers, and so we are wanting to make sure that that's incorporated in our philosophy and in our, in our master plan. So some of those things might be to drive people to lesser-known sites or to increase transit opportunities. I've worked with the Board of County Commissioners quite a bit up on the mountain and some of those issues with the Mount Hood Express and with the, hopefully someday, the creation of a tram system for the ski resorts. So we work in a number of ways, and also with our partners about how they can be more sustainable. That will be the goal. So that is essentially the major change that we've made. The master plan is not required to be updated on a regular basis. It says from time to time, the county code, and this was a time when the board thought it was appropriate to bring it for you, before you for a change. And I think by the word scope that you saw earlier on the previous slide, you can see sustainability came up pretty, pretty strong in that, in that exercise. So the master plan continues to focus on the three pillars that have started from the beginning, I believe, of our work, which the master, the county code was, this part of it, the TRT ordinance was passed in 1992, so it's been going on for quite some time. The three pillars that we've focused on have been agritourism, because we have abundance of agritourism land in our county, and one of... of agritourism land in our county and wonderful assets there, heritage and culture, and outdoor recreation, which continues to loom very large in our amenities. Turning to the strategic priorities, these are contained in the master plan under, on page one of the master plan. And in those is really six areas that we're focusing our work. We want to be positioned to seize tourism-related opportunities and manage threats and barriers in our, based in research and analysis. We are very big into research and analysis, and I think it's one of the reasons why we have been so successful. We don't just shoot a cannon in the dark and hope it hits something. We are really looking to be strategic and focused and surgical. We, one of the priorities is to create and enhance tourism marketing and promotion efforts, which is required under our county code. We certainly make a major effort in that regard. We are a leader in utilizing new technology, strategies, and media to deliver optimum results. We are one of the first in the industry, in our area, to really embrace mobile technology, social media, and led the way, which has really made a huge difference in our, in the whole industry. Not because of us, but because of the technology. But we just saw earlier, I had a great team that said, hey, we really need to look this way. And we continue to do that today. We develop, support, and enhance Clackamas County tourism assets. So we actually, we actually build and invest in our communities and our infrastructure with our resources, more so than any other entity in the state that I'm aware of. And in fact, I think only three or four actually do do that. We create new tourism products, markets, and packages. And we build and strengthen partnerships and coalitions and enhance strategic alliances. Those are very important. We are engaged and plugged in in all levels and numerous areas, and that keeps our work fresh and timely. And that's it. And I would just turn to Kirk, is there anything else you wanted to add before we move on and take questions?
Well, I noticed you have, excuse me, turn my mic off. I noticed you have on here Rooster Rock. Now, that's not in Clackamas County.
We work in partnership with. We also serve as the Travel Oregon.
I know it wasn't.
Travel Oregon, for regional work, we serve as the lead agency and organization for Hood Gorge for Travel Oregon, one of the seven Travel Oregon regions. And so we constantly are plugged in. We also are part of the Greater Portland region and the Willamette Valley region from Travel Oregon. So we participate in a broad array of partnerships. And we are, I think, the only county or organization DMO that actually has a split through three Travel Oregon regions. And we also, we may be the only one that has more than, more than one. So we have a great deal of partnerships to work through, and it makes us a stronger organization because of that.
Okay, are there any questions?
Well, I have just a comment, and I think you guys are doing a lot of great work. And I mean that sincerely. And I, I think I kind of, some of my colleagues realize that, I think it was last weekend or the weekend before, I had some out-of-town family, and they come from all different parts of the country, and some of them even as late as yesterday as they're traveling around. And they stayed over at my place. Unfortunately, that wasn't a hotel lodging. I'm so sorry about that. But they went down and they were going to, they were going to tour, you know, go to some of the museums and literally came back. And again, very similar kinds of things where, oh, there was a sign on the door, and they either weren't open or one of which said, be back in an hour. Those kinds of things. And, you know, I think there's different folks, and one of them, you know, it's as we get older, some of our elderly folks are not as mobile as others, they're not going to go snow skiing. I don't think they're going to do a lot of these recreational activities. But I just think that they're, you know, and I, it's just an opinion, and I don't expect a response, and I really mean it constructively. We have to, I think we've got to find a way to, when we have these experiences that people, that are drawn here, that there is a connection to our, either they're sharing their opinion or their experience as opposed to a sign on the door. Or if they're going to go to recreate, whether it's going to be casting a line in the Clackamas River, which they heard great things about, fishing about, that there's some kind of a connection to their stay that they've made. Or that if they're here for the dog show at the fairgrounds, that they're experienced, because they're paying for that, right? They're going to be paying a fee for that overnight stay, whether it's in their own RV but on that property, that there's a benefit. And they, or there's, and there's also a connection, an opportunity to, whether they vote or have a comment card or whatever, that there needs to be a means for people that are internet savvy as well as folks that are not internet savvy. But they're, people need to know that there's that door, an opportunity. And yesterday, when they were on their way out, leaving town yesterday, I really kind of asked that question, and there was no connection for them. There was no connect. Again, they weren't staying overnight at a hotel. But again, that's, it's just, I think there needs to be a little bit more, I think we need to get to the grassroots a little bit. That's my opinion. My opinion only, it's not a criticism, it's an observation. I've been sharing these things, that there's a lot of things that these tax dollars go towards that there has been, that are not necessarily directed or associated with the activity that actually drew them here. And I do realize that we have to be with it, and we are, we have to be with moving the trends and a lot of outdoor recreation. I think we've done, you guys have done a marvelous job, don't get me wrong. But I think it's kind of spreading the love and the attention that some of those facilities that are in desperate need of help and offering that guidance. I know I've approached the Chair, Mr. Erickson, and Mr. Watts years back, getting help and assistance in that area. And so I'm hoping that we can just talk in a very friendly, open environment about, you know, in a way that is constructive, that it's, we're not, I mean, just consider really what's out there and maybe a closer relationship with the board. I think I get the sense that when we approve this master plan, that our job as the Board of County Commissioners is done. And I hope not. I hope it's not as simple as approving that. And by, of course, I'm going to support the master plan, of course. But my point is that I've been, it's been referenced that if it's not in the master plan or our roles of that Board of County Commissioners is simply to approve the master plan, and after that, we have, there's no, there's no, I mean, I guess, effective role for the Board of County Commissioners thereafter. And maybe there means, needs to involve us, because we are connected to a lot of these constituents that come here. And ultimately, when we're collecting taxes, we're ultimately responsible as the Board of County Commissioners for those taxes. And I think that, you know, I just don't feel a very tangible means of inputting constructively or receive constructively. So I'm hoping that we can break down those barriers. And again, you guys have done some great work, and that has, I mean, I would want you to know, I truly acknowledge the great work you've all done.
May I respond?
Sure.
Thank you. So that's a frustration as Commissioner Savis for us, too, that our museums and other things are not as well-funded or in a place where they are visitor-ready. And we work very diligently on that, as much as we are allowed to do. I should mention to you that we, I did mention that we use our development dollars to invest in the community. And we use those in a variety of ways. We have grant programs. We provide to each of our partner communities, 13 of them, $20,000 each to invest locally. They run their own grant programs, process, and they award their funds to certain smaller opportunities in their communities. We also have developed in response to some of the input that we do receive on a regular basis from the Board of County Commissioners, the investment of heritage and cultural sites. We have $50,000 that we set aside each year, and we've been investing in the physical structures. There's nobody else that does that in the state that I'm aware of. We did that in response to this board. I also will say that we do development grants. We're up to $250,000 this year as the lead of anybody that I'm aware of in the state. And of those, of all those monies, two-thirds go to heritage organizations or to support heritage organizations. So I want to assure you that we take it very seriously. We have worked very diligently to bring them about into a more cohesive membership. They now are working very strategically together, and the county was engaged with that as well. And Business and Community Services has a part-time position that is working in that regard. The issues of, that plague our heritage sites are not tourism-based necessarily, they are structure-based. They are, they have, the county was unable to invest in some of these things, and they have been unable to develop certain funding partnerships in order to keep those going. Collections and so forth are not appropriate uses for tourism dollars. There's just some things that are structural that you can do and some things that we can't. So it's a partnership. We work diligently to promote these entities. Our website treats them equally, as you can see in the master plan. And if you look through the strategic priorities, you would notice that there are a number of initiatives here that have to do with heritage and doing the exact things that you are asking about. So those are our priorities, and we do have direction to do those, and we will be doing those as we have in the past. I would like to say, too, that we have accomplished all of our goals of our current master plan. And they are, it looks every bit as industrious as this. I would also want to mention, that we didn't mention earlier, that the Clackamas County Fairgrounds, one of our best and biggest heritage places here, receives $450,000 this year to support their work. They have increased that each year. So that began in 1992 at 250,000. So right off the top, a huge sum, a significant sum goes to support a heritage site. So we are devoted to the three pillars. Outdoor recreation pretty much helps itself. We don't spend, our dollars in outdoor recreation are the least, because we have very strong partners. Our ski industry and others are very strong, and they can lead this. We don't carry their water. But we really work a lot with agritourism, which is a new and fledgling industry, and that we are also in the leadership in the state on that. So we devote a lot of our energies there and to heritage and culture. So I think you would be pleased to know that we are doing exactly what you were hoping for, and we would invite your participation. As I know you do attend our board meetings on a fairly regular basis, as does Commissioner Schrader as a liaison. So we and the board have constantly tried to keep the door open for any involvement that you would like to participate in, with the caveat that it is, under the county code, the Tourism Development Council is charged with implementing this plan after you have approved it.
Just one last, one last addition, and let me ask a question. The total TRT revenue annually is how much? We're collecting how much annually, roughly?
Well, it's over 5 million, but right off the top, as I mentioned, a good portion goes to the county fair, and then a 2% fee goes to finance to do the collections.
That portion is about 450,000 to the fair?
Yes.
Of the 4 or 5 million. So it'd be, it's not in here, but I think it'd be nice, maybe in the master plan, if we could hand this out to folks, if maybe there was a pie chart that showed the total revenue and where that went. That'd be helpful.
I think that's a great idea. A lot of people think about, you know, think about it disjointly. We do as well, because that money is removed before we ever see it, we don't program it, we don't control it. So we don't think about it in our master planning, other than that you'll see in here that we intend to continue to work with the county fair and the event center on other initiatives that they have in addition to the county.
Yeah, I was generally referring to the amount above the 450,000, the remainder, the other 4 or 5 million dollars or so. Just a suggestion.
Okay, Sonia Fisher, Commissioner Sonia Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I like this strategic plan and the way that it tells the story of what the staff is doing to promote tourism in Clackamas County. I do have one issue, however, with goal number one of the supporting goals on page four, and it says, "Goal number one is to develop a high-performing tourism team." And I only bring this up because I don't think we need to develop a high-performing tourism team. We have a high-performing tourism team. That goal has, in my view, been met in that we've received national awards. We, other states look to us, to how do we promote tourism in our communities? And so I'm fine in supporting this with the word "develop," but my suggestion would be to change that to maintain high-performance tourism team, because I think we've met that. So I wanted to mention that. And I just want to mention how important our investment in this strategic plan is, because as there are $5 million that come into our county, that is a huge economic generator that brings money that is to our community for so many other things that aren't just lodging, for restaurants and other activities, and just connection to our community. And it's so good for our goal as a board to promote a strong and vibrant economy. This is key to all of the effects of that. And so I want to applaud the work that you do, and thank you for that.
I appreciate those comments very much, and I really like your edit, and I appreciate that as well. We look, it's number one because the team is number one. We don't deliver this work without them. And I'm pleased to say that Annie Austin, just this past week, won another international award as the Rising Star in Tourism, and she received it in Washington, DC last week before the IPW Conference, the biggest travel trade show conference in the United States. So that is the kind of team that I have, and so they have to be front and center. But I do agree, we want to maintain them, and we want to keep them. So, thank you.
Commissioner Schrader.
Yeah, I've attended a number of meetings and always enjoy them, and you've got a great, you've really got a great team. My question has to do with goal two. The county fair board, event center, county departments, and other partners to determine possible approach and funding strategies to determine site and facility improvements and enhancements. It's an unusual situation, because my understanding is, I'm going to look at Don for this, is that we own the facilities, but they are under the direct management of a fair board.
Yes, and actually, probably county council can address this as well, but they are an independent entity under the state statutes, and the state statutes afford them full and complete authority for carrying out the responsibilities of operating the fair, maintaining the operations, and managing the financials for the fair grounds, facilities. But we are in the position where we own the underlying land and all of the physical assets on the fairgrounds.
And we have had significant, we've had significant issue with some of the assets. The barn in particular has been, had to be deconstructed because of the maintenance hadn't been done in a long time, which is a concern. But right now, am I to understand that Business and Community Services is more involved with managing the facilities?
The $450,000 of, I guess it's now the transient lodging tax as opposed to the transient room tax. But the $450,000 that is essentially swept on the top, that then is budgeted in the Business and Community Services budget, and is budgeted through Business and Community Services as a part of your annual budget process. Laura Zentner works with the staff who work for the fair board in putting together that budget, and it's presented to the board and the Budget Committee every year.
Okay. And the reason I am asking, because the sentence says county departments, so I'm assuming it's Business and Community Services. So you would be more in a strategic, it wouldn't be additional dollars, it would be more of a strategic planning role that you would see yourself taking with this?
Thank you, Chair and Commissioner Schrader. The idea behind that is exactly what we did yesterday. A group of us met with Commissioner Humbertston and talked about some ideas about how we might be able to support some of these activities. And strategically, we work very frequently with other county departments and with other partners. And so we would continue to engage in that way. We also have invited the event center and the county fair to perhaps apply for a development grant at some point in the future when they have a project that meets those criteria. And we have supported them before with strategic planning and asset to inventories and such. So we've been engaged over the years to help kind of move it along.
So if they received, if they received a grant, then would that be funneled through BCS? Since they're kind of the facilities, they're the pass-through for?
I'm having trouble hearing you.
Well, if they apply for a grant and they get the money, it's going to be managed it's going to be managed by Business and Community Services or the fair board directly?
No, that goes, the grant is managed directly by the fair board and the fair board staff because they are an independent entity created under the state statutes.
But the pass, and the pass-through wouldn't go through BCS at all?
Correct.
In terms of even their help with managing anything with facility maintenance? Okay, thank you.
I would just add to that, that it depends on what and how they apply for it. Do they apply for it as a partner? Usually those are partnership with other entities. They may or may not take the leadership role. I'm not sure. And often it's done through consultant work, whatever it may be that they're having, they may, may or may have done in those processes. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we work with them on marketing and promotion too. They come up in our, in our advertising and promotion work quite a bit and on our website. So those are those other services that we provide that there isn't a charge for.
Yeah, and my concern, the reason I'm asking is it's the failing infrastructure that we really are dealing with there that becomes a safety hazard for our citizens at a very popular venue. And I become more and more worried as the maintenance falls further and further behind that we, as the commission, are directly liable for that despite the fact that it appears as if we don't have any direct control over how that's managed. It's a very awkward, odd situation for us. And we, we have to watch out for the physical welfare of our citizens. We are very lucky that nobody was in that barn when it, well, when the roof fell in. So.
Yes. So I, I, I would probably want to defer to the commission's liaison to the, to the fair board to address this more specifically. But I do know that Mr. Humbertson, in serving in that capacity, is actively engaged in working with his partners on the fair board towards coming up with a strategy for just how we are in fact going to deal with the aging infrastructure of that facility. And it is a concern.
Okay, thank you.
One other point that might be of interest to you is that also serving on the fair board is Roger Beebe, who is a board member on the Tourism Development Council. We want, we were looking for that link to, to generate that sort of synergy. He is the general manager of the Crown Plaza Hotel in Lake Oswego. So again, more of that hospitality experience and I believe that, that will foster even deeper relationships between the two.
Great. Commissioner Humbertson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of comments and a couple of questions. First, I wanted to commend you on the outreach that you did to the community. I think that's a good way of, of doing business and I appreciate that you do that. I did have a couple of questions. You have an idea of how many people actually participated in that outreach? And I'm going to assume, but I'll still ask, were tourism-related businesses participating in that outreach?
I believe there were more than 100 people that attended these events. And we also went online for long periods of time and invited our entire E-list to participate and, and our partnership newsletters as well. So it reached a broad array of people. How many people looked or responded online? It was more limited, but it does, it doesn't mean that they didn't participate. They may not have had something they wanted to add. So, or they thought it was already covered. But we had a number of people, some of the, some of the places were small areas, you know, out into Malala and down to, or up to a government camp area, Welch's. We still had great participation for, for those. And yes, there were, mostly who's interested are the people who are engaged in the business. And so I would, we have that representation on our board as well. But they definitely come out and they are the recipients of these funds and they help us expend these funds and actually monitor and report performance, which we have a number of performance measures that we provide to you. Commissioner Savas asked about that earlier, so we, we have those as well to, to share. But yes, they all participated and were invited in many ways to do so.
Thank you. With respect to some of the smaller museum facilities and old homes and that sort of thing that, that you promote in, in the, in our travel outreach, are the people who work there in those docents, are they free? Are they volunteers or are they paid?
Well, I would say close to 90% of the time they are volunteers. And that's part of the struggle that they have.
And I just wanted to, I asked that question deliberately because I understand why sometimes a place is going to be closed. If we're dependent upon volunteer labor, then you accept what you can get gratefully. And unfortunately, sometimes that means a facility is going to be closed.
I would also answer that part of the problem that museums and others are experiencing is changing traveler behavior.
Yeah.
Travelers and any of you who may be like me, the mother of millennials or fathers, you understand what these people do with their lives. They, it's, a lot of it's online and they have different interests and they do things differently. And so those, those entities, the museums and such, it's, it's hard to figure out how to be relevant to the new, new groups coming up. And there are some very creative people. Claire Blaylock, for instance, at Moot and some others have been really wonderful in looking at new ways that people engage. And those, those entities that are organizations and heritage sites that are doing that are, are being more successful. And so we're really looking at, it's, it's a volunteer situation, sure, but it's also a problem in that the people who used to come through the door and drop the, the change in the donation purse aren't coming through anymore. And, and it's challenging. And so the sites deteriorate.
Lastly, I just wanted to say I'm looking forward to working with you and your team as far as improving the circumstances at the, at the county fair facility. Note, most noteworthy is working on how we will do better marketing for the bulk of the year and make sure that they're on a good, solid financial footing. And we will be working on a master plan, a business plan, a marketing plan and a facilities plan. So that's all in the works. It's going to take time. But I think with the new membership on that board and the new leadership on that board, we have a window of opportunity to make things better. Thank you.
Commissioner Savas.
Just real quickly to Commissioner Schrader's point, when she directed us to look at goal two, just the title and hearing the administrator and everyone else's response, I wonder if that sentence ought to be changed to say, "Assist the fair board in developing the county event center strategic plan." Because it appears as though that it's a charge of the TDC versus the fair board. So it's in the paragraph, obviously, to work with the fair board. That's really what we're, what the, my suggested edits would, would say. But it does read as though it's a responsibility of the TDC, the way it reads.
Perhaps something like "work in partnership to develop" or something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's a great edit, you know, because it's true. We don't control anything there.
Okay, I have a problem with the 7,000th word, page 88.
Not onto goal three?
Onto goal three.
A little levity.
I just wanted to mention that one of the things we did, help the fair board and try to help them move forward in the future was to increase the size of the board. And Roger, who has, I'd say vast experience in budgeting and planning for project development, was one of those key factors. Because he, you know, they just went through a huge renovation. We had an opportunity to party at the grand opening. And I talked to him quite a bit about, you know, where they go from there. And I, I appreciate the things you mentioned. There's quite a list of projects, quite a list of visioning that needs to go on so that in the future, the fair, the, the grounds can support the fair. And rather than the fair support the grounds in the year, they'll, they'll never quite get there. Also wanted to mention that bicycle tourism, which you have in your plan, I want to, a couple of those at least, one out in Malala, there actually are businesses that were created out of that. One being the, the one by, in Oregon City, the cafe, what's that called?
Well, there's First City Cycles that was developed by Blaine Meyer. And then there is the Bike Bistro now at the Amtrak station in Oregon City, which was inspired by this. The Bicycle Concierge, who has been a tremendous asset for us. And now there are, there are plans to develop a hotel at that site. So it's really inspired and I think generated great business development for Oregon City. It's a, it's a niche thing, but it, we have it, you know, bicycle tourism throughout the county and its different forms is very, very important to our, our infrastructure here.
So as far as the legislature lobbying, you know, for wineries, for farm-to-table things, does the state tourism, which they get a substantial amount of the money that is collected in the county, is that their job or do you guys do lobbying? I know you do some with, with our staff. But do you work at opening up opportunities at agricultural facilities, farm, century farms and stuff like that for some sustainable opportunity for revenue generation at, on these properties?
Yes, we do, Chair. We are, and so does Travel Oregon. Travel Oregon and, and actually Clackamas County are the two most engaged in agritourism in, in eastern Oregon. So, and more have come on board. So we, Travel Oregon now has a partnership that gets together with members throughout the state. And we discuss and figure out how to advance the interests of agritourism in the county. We have, we have had an agritourism strategic plan since 2012. So we were really early adopters on that. We, we're, the goals are different in there, you know. Part of our strategies in the, in, in the agritourism arena are more related to lodging and, and activities. They, this is a new, a new budding industry here. It's certainly old in Europe and other places. It's been around quite a bit. But we still struggle with some of the land use issues. How do you get lodging out into some of these areas? It's, for instance, Malala probably won't be able to host a big hotel anytime soon, but they certainly could host a number of bed and breakfasts and other kinds of farm stays, et cetera, that would allow for agritourism to really blossom there. But though, we run into conflicts with our county code and with state code and so does, so does the Travel Oregon. So we are continuing to work on those and smooth those out. Our county staff and, and development and transportation have worked with us hand in hand in trying to figure out some of these things. And we continue to hope that we will make more advancement for agritourism.
Great. With that, any further questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move. We approve the Tourism Master Plan 2017 through 2022 and strategic priorities. And with the minor change in language as suggested by Commissioner Savas and.
And Fisher.
And Commissioner Fisher.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Tourism Master Plan 2017 to 2022 and strategic priorities. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just need to just state for the record, a potential appearance of a conflict of interest since I am married to Kirk Mauser, who serves as a volunteer on the tourism board.
All right. So I'm trying to decide whether I should also announce that this does not increase anybody's salary. Your husband's a volunteer. So I don't know that there's a potential.
Appearance, a potential appearance of a conflict of interest.
So I'll state the same, that there's a potential conflict, but I'll be voting on this issue. Okay, with that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So the next item, oh, by the way, did you charge a tax for your relatives to stay? No, I mentioned that earlier. Is that cash or check? I know that there is some legislation being considered that would open up opportunities in our rural communities where there are houses that sit vacant because they built another house. And there is some legislation being considered which could address not only tourism, but also homelessness or lack of affordable home, housing that I'm very interested in. I don't know how it's doing, but I heard it's, it's moving along. So I look forward to that. So the next item, Mr. Krupp, would you please introduce?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is our second public discussion item this morning and it's to consider a board order for the Malala Aquatic District. We have Mr. Chris Story here, Assistant County Counsel, to present this to you.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a happy result of a process that's been ongoing for quite a while. The matter of the possible formation of the Malala Aquatic District first came before you as a board. On January 19th, a petition was organized and gathered by members of the Malala community about potentially forming a district that would support the pool there in Malala. It would levy an independent tax and it would provide that support directly. It had to propose boundaries, coterminous with those of the Malala River School District. And the school district and the city were both supportive of the project. You considered and approved the petition initially on January 19th and you ordered an election on February 9th that was held on May 16th and it passed. So here we have the happy result of it has been approved by the voters and you as the boundary commission enter the final order that actually creates the district. And from this point forward, it will become an independent district. It's not managed by or on behalf of the county. They will have their own directly elected board of governors, who were actually elected in that same May election. They had candidates apply with the possibility that the major would pass and the district would be formed. So once this order is adopted and that district is formed, they will then be authorized to take the oath of office and begin serving as the initial governing body of the Malala Aquatic District. There is no particular public discussion or debate, in part because the voters have spoken. So we, I think, did invite petitioners to come and share their perspective. So if they would, anyone would like to do so, or maybe just a nod. You don't feel compelled, but certainly you're welcome.
And please give your name and where you live. You're Maryland.
Hi, I'm Marilyn Block from Malala. I'm one of the recently elected board directors of the Malala Aquatic District elect. And I wanted to thank the county for its help in getting this passed, especially Mr. Story coming to our second joint city-school district, Friends of Malala Pool co-small subcommittee planning the, the election. And I want to thank the, the elections people helping us, guide us through the, the whole election process. This was a process of, it was a nearly 62% to 38%. So it was, and it was achieved through a coalition of lots of community members. The school district, the city, the Friends of Malala Pool, local businesses, local restaurants that held fundraisers. So this was just a happy circumstance in Malala. I really appreciate that. So we're ready to, we're already meeting as a board elect and we're ready to get going and get the pool reopened. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just one comment.
Oh, Commissioner Humbertson.
Thank you. This is just a, kind of a technical comment. I was in the, at the Malala City Council meeting a few weeks ago and a couple of people stopped me and commented that they appreciated the fact that we made it clear that compression issue could be a potential issue and that they needed to think that through and be sure that they were clearly voting on something that they understood and what the consequences of that decision would be and make an informed choice. And they really appreciated the fact that we pointed that out. And I think in the future, when we're dealing with things like this, we want to make that very clear to voters so that when they make a decision, which is clearly a value judgment decision, that they are well-informed and know exactly what it is they're voting for and what the consequences may or may not be, as the case may be. So that was one of the, a couple of actually positive comments I received when I was at their city council meeting.
Commissioner Savas. I just want to say congratulations and I'm sure you'll be a very exciting time for all you folks on the board to coalesce and learn a lot more. for all you folks on the board to coalesce and learn a lot more. I know I did when I got my first district position, but I certainly wasn't involved in a brand-new organization, so it's got to be pretty exciting with lots of things to learn, so my, my best wishes.
Question, I'm, I'm a little confused. It passed to create a district, and it has a tax base, and I assume there was a board that ran in that election, and they were appointed. What are we doing today?
The, the measure that was proposed was an election ordered by you as the Boundary Commission of Clackamas County. So now we are receiving the certified election results back from the clerk. Those are attachments to the orders that we have here today, and the order that you're entering is the official start date of the district. The district, while approved by the voters, needs your imprinture to be able to officially begin.
Great, because one of the things that I was questioning, and of course I read the material, was that we have districts that were created that have no tax base, and I wanted to just make really sure that we didn't, we had a tax base and that those fees that are required to file an election can be collected from somebody. So that was, I was just a little bit confused about, it's kind of different. I don't, have we ever, we haven't started a district since I've been here, a new district.
No district.
We've closed them.
Well, we've, I'm, I'm not sure about the timing of it, but we've, we've created two new county service districts, the Library District of Clackamas County and the Extension of 4-H District, both of which had a permanent rate. However, it was a bit more seamless because they are county service districts and we were able to incorporate them into the existing county infrastructure.
Yeah.
And they already had an existing governing body.
They were all actually created before I got here, or they were, it was the same election, so.
2008.
All right. Well, great. Any further discussion?
Chair, I move we approve the board order forming the Malala Aquatic District acknowledging the initial election of its Board of Directors.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the board order forming the Malala Aquatic District and acknowledging the initial election of its Board of Directors. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Congratulations. Invite us to the ribbon cutting.
The first swim.
Yeah, first swim.
The first swim, yeah.
The pool already exists, though, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, the pool already exists. Okay, the next item is the consent agenda. Ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation, Rail and Public Transit Division for operations for the Mount Hood Express Bus Service. Approval of an agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation, Rail and Public Transit Division for the 5310 Enhanced Mobility Funds for Preventive Maintenance Funding for the Mount Hood Express and Purchase Service for Boring Residents. Under Community Corrections, approval of a Contract Amendment Number Nine and Renewal of Number Four with Bridges to Change Inc. for Transitional Housing and Mentoring Services for Community Corrections Clients. Under Elected Officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Approval of an amendment to an intergovernmental agreement number 147911 with the State of Oregon Department of Human Services and the District Attorney's Office relating to juvenile dependency cases. Approval of an amendment to intergovernmental agreement number 148537 with the State of Oregon Department of Human Services and the District Attorney's Office relating to child welfare dependence cases. Under Disaster Management, approval to apply for fiscal year 2017 Emergency Management Performance Grant with the State of Oregon. Under County Council, approval of the designation of newspaper for the 2017 Property Tax Foreclosure Publication. And under Development Agency, approval of a contract with Harper Huff Peterson Regalas Inc. for design of the Clackamas Regional Center Mobility Improvement Project, and that concludes the consent agenda.
Does any Commissioner want to remove or pull any item from the consent agenda? So any discussion on the consent agenda?
Just one question, Mr. Chairman. On the cost of publication issue, we select a newspaper to advertise in, so, excuse me, assuming we assume that we select Lake Oswego Review, but what if the piece of property is in Rhododendron? How does somebody up there know that this piece of property is in foreclosure if we're advertising in a newspaper that is not in general circulation in their community?
We do Pamplin Media is what this one is. Typically, you'll have the Oregonian whose circulation has decreased, or you'll have the Daily Journal of Commerce. You're not going to get any guarantee from any of those media outlets that it's going to cover the area in question entirely. This is requirement that we designate a newspaper which has general circulation within the county, which this one does qualify for. It's also posted on our website, and it's also posted in prominent locations as required by law as well. So it's the best we can do, there's no guarantee.
Okay, so it's not required to absolutely guarantee that the coverage is, cover the, the actual geographic area that the property is located in?
That's correct, because there can't, there are places in this state where there's no newspaper covering it in general anyway. Yeah, but it's, it's important that we designate the paper of record on an annual basis, and that's what this one is.
Okay, thank you.
And you can't even guarantee that they'll publish it, right?
No, you can't guarantee that they'll read it. You can guarantee that they'll publish it, though, because they give you certification of, of the publishing, yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Fisher.
Yeah, I just, I just have a comment about the consent agendas. I appreciate reading the items on the consent agenda because it informs me, and I know it informs the rest of us, as to what's happening within government, where's our money going, where does it come from, what do we need to do for the operation of keeping things running smoothly? And I usually get a lot of really good information that is good to know. I had a little bit of a struggle with what came from the District Attorney, because I, and I actually spent some time working in the District Attorney's Office as a volunteer special prosecutor, but I literally, after reading that, I don't really know what, what we're doing. And I don't want to hold anything up, because I think we need to, as the consent agenda, support keeping government operation functionally, and I know we need these intergovernmental agreements, and we need to keep moving forward, but it would just be helpful, I'm not sure how to, how to make that suggestion to the District Attorney, that they just provide a little bit more meat so we can be educated as to, as to what the money is being used for.
Usually, usually what we do in that case is to call or have staff research it before the meeting or a work session, and try to get those answers ahead of time, but-
So, so one thing I can do as a follow-up, I can talk with the District Attorney about the content of the staff report materials that they put together for these types of items, but as always, prior to actually having these on your business meeting agenda, as we publish these in advance, if you have any questions at all, we'll follow up for you on that zone.
Yeah, and I, I don't have any interest in removing these, or I don't have questions. I understand the importance of intergovernmental agreements. I know in general the important work that the District Attorney does on juvenile dependency, which this supports, but boy, I would really like to know as to how are we improving and what are the goals? Because we get that information for our other departments. We get more of a sense, and it's very educational for us as Commissioners as to what our county government is doing.
Great, and we have an opportunity at lunch today for you to ask that question.
Oh, that's true. I know, if he is there, yes.
Okay, Commissioner Savis.
Yeah, just a comment. I wasn't going to comment on Commissioner Fisher's concern, but I'll just, I will anyhow, just to say that what I've, what I did to get myself accommodated early on was just schedule some time for myself to go through those agenda items, and then, and now as a habit, what I do is I thumb through all those things, and when I have a question, I'll contact that staff or look into it a little bit deeper. But it's just a, a matter of just scheduling the work, and there's a lot, sometimes these things are pretty thick, and that takes a lot of time, so. But the main reason I wanted to actually make a comment, back to the publication, it's, it is, I guess really frankly, somewhat of the minimum requirement as far as the notification, as far as what, what publication. I suppose if we were overachievers, we would publish it in every Pamplin Media in the county. That may or may, you know, and that's expensive, I understand that, but it's a striking the balance between what's efficient with our dollars, the taxpayer dollars, and the notification. I, I don't, you know, fortunately, there's other means of doing that, but I don't know, it is what it is.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't a complaint, just was kind of concerned as to whether or not that, that really met the, the legal requirements, which clearly it does, and probably can't do much better than that since we don't have big giant newspapers that circulate to millions of people anymore.
I was kind of surprised that the Portland Tribune, oddly enough, is circulated in a lot of parts of the county. So for example, if you're in Oregon City, you can often find the Tribune. If you're in Lake Oswego, you can trip across the Portland Tribune, and, and the Clackamas Review doesn't have that reach, but the Clackamas Review of all of the publications probably has the broadest reach, I think, population-wise than any of them. But I don't know necessarily that, that is representative in their circulation numbers. I have no idea to actually qualify if the circulation numbers match the geographic reach, but just a point, I subscribe to most of those, just to stay abreast of what's going on in the county.
So I just actually, we so rarely comment on these. The Mountain Express, you know, Bob Reeves, who we lost a while back, was instrumental in the creation of the Mount Hood Express. It's been extremely successful, something that I think the county can be very proud in having participated, and thanks to Sandy, their transit service, which is called, anybody remember? Sandy Transit Service.
Sam.
Huh?
Sam.
Oh, that's a tough one. Sam, as, you know, partnered to make this program very successful, you know, up on the mountains, not only, you know, there's a parking issue. It's helped reduce the parking issue, it certainly has not solved it. It's also folks who don't drive or are vulnerable have an opportunity to take the bus to get the services that they need. It's very inexpensive, and it has expanded significantly over the years since I've been here. I think I probably could look it up, but it, it seems to me it started right around when, when I got here, but I, I just wanted to mention what a great program, how successful, and thank Sam, Sandy Transit Service, for their outstanding partnership in moving this project forward, and by the way, the ski resorts and the businesses who have contributed to making this project successful, and the future of perhaps a traffic, I mean, a Transportation Management Association that could look at who's going to take this out of our hands someday and give it to a larger group to make sure it continues its successful growth. With that, I think there was a motion, oh, Commissioner Schrader.
I just wanted to point out that with Bob Reeves, that was actually a result of the program we started, the Hamlet and Village Program, and the villages of Mount Hood really did what we had really hoped is a good example of what citizens, when they're given a broader opportunity and a framework, can really be catalysts for change and get the betterment of, you know, things like that, that, that give the community more capacity. So I, I'd like to hold them up as one of the key successes of that Hamlet and Village experiment that we started years ago, so.
Great. Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Point of order, there's no motion on the table?
Didn't somebody make a motion? Yeah.
I did not hear it, I apologize. Mr. Chairman?
You don't think there was?
No, there was.
No, I didn't think there was.
So who made the motion?
I will make the motion. I move we approve the consent agenda.
Who seconded it?
I'll second.
Yeah, I know there was, because I went and gone to discussion.
Yeah, right.
All right, let's look at the tape, let me know. Okay. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye, to both.
Yeah, I changed something in the second one. No, actually, I think maybe we didn't make the motion, now that I think about it.
I don't think we did.
Because I think, as I recall, Kevin finished, and the question came right away, and there was no opportunity for a motion.
Just kind of got caught up again.
It's been a long day, it's almost noon. Okay, with that, we're on to county administrator updates.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I've got several-
You did vote, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Can we roll that back?
We can watch the TV clip later.
Then we vote, aye.
Kind of similar to the work we saw going on at Electric Entertainment yesterday, you know, where they do a take and have to do another take, and so, yeah. So I, I've got several items for you this morning. First, I wanted to let you know that one of our county transportation projects, the Tolbert Bridge Overcrossing from 82nd Avenue to Minuteman Way, won third place in this year's Daily Journal of Commerce Top Projects Awards. The program honors the best building and construction projects in Oregon and Southwest Washington from the past year, and I just wanted to give a shout out to Terry Munganast in our Transportation Engineering Division, who was the project manager for that project. And then I also wanted to let the public know that our disaster management team has initiated a campaign to not just inform our employees, but also the public, that we've updated our emergency operations plan, and we've been informing internally through emails and then externally through our social media outlets to let everybody know just how we are planning to serve residents during times of greatest need, and I wanted to encourage the public to check out our plans for responding to things such as mass care, transportation, food and water, and more by going to our disaster manager webpage online. And then finally, you know, I, once again, I got a really nice note regarding some excellent staff work from our Transportation and Development Department. An individual named Kim, a local homeowner, contacted us about a water pipe leak that was caused by a utility contractor, and we sent Duffy Gertz out to investigate, and what we heard back from Kim was this. From my very first engagement with Duffy, he has been what I can only describe as the best representative for any government agency I have ever enacted, interacted with. More specifically, he listened to me as a concerned county citizen and as a homeowner being impacted by the issues. He convened the appropriate parties to identify options and solutions, maintained consistent communication with me even if there weren't significant updates, so he would stay in touch, so I know he hadn't forgotten me. He served as a problem solver, intermediary and negotiator, and he represented the county as a truly caring person about its residents. I hope you can use this email and my experience as an example for other employees working for the county. He has set a very high bar, but one that has left me feeling grateful and incredibly appreciative. Thank you for employing people like Duffy on your staff. So big kudos to Duffy for really embodying our core values here at Clackamas County, service, professionalism and respect.
Perhaps we ought to send him over to the Carver area.
Yeah.
Might help.
We'll get right on it.
I was going to say, they, they evidently haven't met Ken yet. Okay, with that, we'll start with Ken Humbertson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just the other day, we had the opportunity to go to Electric Entertainment and tour their facilities. Very interesting to see what they do. I'm just going to lay out a couple of numbers for the public to, to really have a sense of how important this industry can be and is to our area. They brought into our area roughly $200 million in the last year. In addition, if you look at how much the state pays in incentives and you look at the return on investment, there's a 12 to 1 return on investment with this industry. In simple terms, if the state gives $1 million in incentives, there's $12 million worth of economic benefit that occurs in the state or in our county, depending on where they're working. Unfortunately, on the downside is because it's not large enough yet, and they would like to expand and have more facilities, which I hope we can help them do, there was the opportunity for another $400 million that unfortunately other jurisdictions got because we didn't have what we needed to, to help them. So there's a really great opportunity there, and I hope we work hard at figuring out ways to facilitate that growth here in Clackamas County. For those of you who didn't see it in the newspapers, Portland is going to be building the tallest, I believe, in North America, Allwood Structure. It's been approved by- It's been approved by the state in cross laminated timber. I beat my drum again. So I'm looking forward to seeing that project completed and I hope it sets the standard for us going forward and that we are able to develop this industry. And that was all of my personal comments today, so what we have next is the dog.
I bet you at night you mumble cross laminated timber.
I dream cross laminated timber. It's a great opportunity. And today, are you looking for a new buddy? Well, look no further because you have found him. True to his name, he promises to be your buddy. This three-year-old pit bull, Mix, loves to play and is social with people. He gets along with calm, respectful dogs, but does not appreciate rambunctious dogs in his face, so no dog parks, please. He knows how to sit, but that's about the extent of his current knowledge. However, he is a motivated boy that would love to take training classes with you and expand his knowledge. Come on down and get to know each other. For more information about Buddy and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services at 503-655-8628 or www.clackamas.us/dogs. Thank you.
Right, Commissioner Schrader.
Yeah, I had the opportunity yesterday to travel to Salem and with Governor Barbara Roberts and Congresswoman Darlene Houli, we testified in favor of Senate Bill 256, which is in front of my friend Senator Betsy Johnson in the Business and Transportation Ways and Means Committee. And that is the bill that is working towards getting a statewide coalition to help manage the, you know, the disposition of the Willamette Falls locks. Actually, the course is looking at the disposition of it now and people do have an opportunity to testify in favor of that issue. We are asking that, as they move forward with this project, that they actually repair the structure to a safe and usable condition. And the bill is designed to actually then form a statewide committee with multiple stakeholders to help decide who's actually going to manage that facility once the Corps of Engineers repairs it and goes through the disposition process. So it's nice to see my friends, I've known both of them for a long time. I still have Congressman Darlene Houli's furniture in my office. Staff keeps trying to get me to buy new furniture and I say, now we ought to just put a plaque on it because it's part of the history of the county at this point. This morning, I attended our Workforce Board meeting where I am an adjunct to Workforce Clackamas. I want to say that our Economic Development Team gave a bang-up fabulous presentation about the work they do in this county for business retention, expansion and recruitment, everything from what we do in analyzing what we have to how we attract new businesses and how they manage to also keep in mind that we need a land inventory for businesses to expand on and for recruitment purposes. They did, they did a fantastic job. They are a real strong partner with our Workforce Board and our Workforce Board is the board that's charged with implementing the Workforce Investment and Opportunity Act. We are part of the fiscal agent for that piece where the federal dollars for some of the programs get funneled through the county, but they also do work with other nonprofits and other entities in the county to expand the workforce base. One of the things we talked about today was a talent strategy plan called Tech Town Portland and it's a skilled workforce development strategy throughout Clark, Cowlets, Waukeek, Com, Washington, Multnomah and Clackamas counties. We perceive workforce as a regional piece. It's a plan that basically has key perform, planned goals, key performance indicators. And basically, it's also focused on making sure that there is diversity in the workforce, so I have this information available should folks want to read it. I gave an update also from the county at the being this morning where I talked about the budget and where we were in that and managed to inform people. We are now slightly over the billion dollar mark. We are a billion dollar enterprise in this region and I think that we're striving to really be good stewards of the dollars that are given to us. It's a, it's quite a responsibility, as a matter of fact. I also talked to them, of course, about cross laminated timber because we've been continuing to work on the supply chain side of that. And I did inform Commissioner Humbertson that there was an opportunity, I hope I said that correctly, opportunity, opportunity to go, I'll be going to San Francisco next week, colleagues, because with the China Infrastructure Cooperative Forum with some of the delegation from the Chinese consulate, there will be folks there who are interested in building new cities, which is kind of what they tend to do at, in China, this is, the entire thing gets built. But they're starting to look at, at products like cross laminated timber because they are realizing that, that some of their pollution issues are public health issues and as a country, they're starting to recognize that the environmental piece and, and the necessary regulatory piece needs to be in place for the health and safety of their citizens. So I'm going to get a chance to do that. I want to thank you for giving me the time and space to do it. So I won't be here at next Thursday's meeting, but hopefully I'll come back with something tangible from that visit. Also, arts and culture activities in the county. Here we go. Sandy Actors Theater presents Godspell. Using song and dance and a lot of humor, the apostles traverse the city, spreading the message of love and tolerance in the attempt to rebuild a community. As time moves ever closer to Jesus's betrayal at the hands of Judas, it is a story of compassion, tolerance and love regardless of your religious affiliation and it's a wonderful, fun musical. Friday and Saturday, June 16th and 17th, 7:30 PM and Sunday, June 18th, 3:00 PM at the Sandy Actors Theater. And Youth Music Project Teen Open Mic Night. Come play two songs for a supportive, cheerful audience of all ages. Feel free to pile on the sartorial sparkle and have friends or family take photos or video of your performance on our out of, on their state of the art stage. We get filmed already, I won't be participating in that actually. Friday, June 16th, 7:00 PM. Performers sign in from 6:00 to 6:30 PM at the YMP Meteor Lounge in Westland. And for more information about arts events, clackamasartsalliance.org.
Commissioner Fisher.
Just a few things to highlight from the last week. I also was in Salem talking with Senator Burdick about House Bill 2004, which would give us more tools to deal with housing affordability issues. That bill is working its way through the legislature, it's going through many changes and us, our input at the state level is really important for our legislators at this critical time. Couple other things, I had the honor and the privilege of doing a ribbon cutting for Sarah Parker, who is a woman with mobility challenges. Our small grants program through Clackamas County funded the materials so that she could have her bathroom remodeled so that she can get in and out of the shower easily and there was a nice celebration at her home. All of the work that was done to make that happen was volunteered, it was a wonderful community event and it's wonderful to see our small grants projects, program go a long way in helping people in our community. And the other part I wanted to share is Commissioner Humbertson and I were out at the Boring Grange, serving breakfast to folks and it was a wonderful opportunity to listen to our constituents and have conversations. Couple things that came up in just conversation, big issue of course is the roads and I've decided that it's important to have our constituents give us plans on what do we need to do to raise the revenue, to fix our roads and going through the money with folks as to where we are behind, that we're 300 million behind in our roads and we need 17 million a year we're falling behind in our road maintenance. And it was good conversations and really folks were saying, you know, we just need a, we need a tax that is tied to travel and one gentleman, his name is Don, and he suggested increase in the gas tax. So I just wanted to share that, that was a big conversation out at the Grange. I then went with Mike Fitz, who, on a tour of Boring, he is very active in the community planning organization there. And I took one look at him and I thought, you know what, I wonder if he's related to my Centennial High School Vice Principal. And sure enough, it was his brother. And while my high school vice principal, Mr. Fitz terrified all the students in the school because he was so hard on the exterior, he had a real love for students and cared about kids. And as I spent the morning with his brother, Mike Fitz, who's hard on the outside but totally cares about his community, I had a wonderful experience learning all about Boring. We drove all the corners of Boring, Oregon and some of the takeaways, just one of, one of the Mikeisms I just want to share, we all know that nurseries are big industry in Boring and we also know that Boring grows a lot of berries. Well, as we went around and we looked at the nurseries, there are very high shrubs that, that are sort of block off some of the nurseries. And he asked me, he says, you know why those shrubs are so high? And I'm like, no, I, I'm thinking, oh, maybe there's a marijuana grow in there that they don't want anyone to see. But his response was, we had, the shrubs are high, so you keep the city folk out from stealing the plants. The city folk, yeah. But what I took away, just a takeaway, I get, I'm getting takeaways from every community that I visit. And what was really interesting about going around with Bob, with Mike, is that we stopped at the dairy farm, we talked to the dairy farmers, we learned about the solar panels that are there, we had a wonderful conversation. This wasn't set up, this is what you do in Boring, you just kind of stop by and, and talk with folks. It's very much a community. And we also just happened to stop by the home of Bob Boring, the namesake of Boring, and had wonderful conversation. It was just really heartwarming and, and great. Another takeaway is, we at the county government can do a lot to support our more rural communities and one way we can really support our rural communities is to get out of their way and allow them to live the life that they want to live. That was a, a good message that to take away, so.
Commissioner Savis.
Yeah, Mike goes by the name of Fitz, everyone calls him Fitz.
Yeah.
I guess it fits. Yeah, well, to Commissioner Fisher's point about that 17 million dollar gap in road funding, I've been spending a tremendous amount of my time on the transportation aspects in the bill, the legislative bill that's in the works. And I just want to update my colleagues that we're fighting really hard to get, or at least I am and others, trying to get a share, a reasonable share and a say at the table. And the reason why this is so important as there's structures going up is that there's going to be basically a district formed and that district will only cover half the county and that's really, the, the boundary of the district is really the metro urban growth boundary, the service district. So really what that is really divides the county, but nonetheless, for the entire county, if this bill passes in its current form, there's approximately $9 million to close that 17 million dollar gap. So that's, that's good news if that indeed passes. There's a lot of other stuff in there. There was, been a lot of confusion and discussion on media, the radio, on TV about tolling. And we had a great discussion this morning as Washington State was presenting their bus option and talking about congestion, which led to my question was, due to other questions related to, if you toll 205, how's that going to help me? I go, where do you live? Well, I get stuck on I-205 trying to get to the, get to the upper part in, off of Sandy, forgot that neighborhood up there, Park Rose. And it's all, it's all bunched up because of that traffic in Washington State. So it does bunch up and it bunches up on I-5 and 205 crossing the river at rush hour, let's say four or five o'clock. And, and indeed, there are some bottleneck issues on 205 in Washington State that's not going to be addressed, obviously, by the Oregon Transportation Bill, but there was acknowledgement from WashDOT who has, has a seat at the table that, that is indeed, they have their challenges up there and that is adding to the congestion in Oregon, which won't be fixed by any kind of a toll. So next Thursday, I will be, also be in California on a transportation group, the J-PAC group is going to, to California, so I'll be in Long Beach, not, not Long Beach, but Los Angeles next week.
Same, see ya.
So maybe we'll, yeah, I'll wave to you as I'm flying over to the Bay Area. So I did want to talk, on Thursday, on Friday of last week, I went to the Kenton Women's Shelter opening and I talked to Chair Kefory of Multnomah County and some staff and saw what they did there. And when I first learned of the Kenton neighborhood, I, I assumed it was in northeast Portland. I don't know why, I don't know why, I really don't, but I just assumed it was there. But when I first went there and discovered that it was near the interstate line, the interstate rail line, light rail line, I thought, oh, this is, this is, this is interesting. And in talking to Chair Kefory, she said, yeah, we, you know, you're aware of the other one that we have and we're opening another one. I go, where's the other one you're talking about? Well, so I'm, I'm McLaughlin and 17th in Portland, which is near the Orange Line. And where's the other one you're opening? Well, the other one we're opening is around 92nd and 205 in that area right over there, which is near the Green Line, which came up at a discussion last night at CIA Citizens Informed and Aware about displacement and homeless and all those things, which was a, a big topic. And our own staff, Persis Wahid Brown, and the question or really discussion came up around people's experience that some of these folks that are homeless stay in the area that they, they went to school in or they, they grew up in. They don't really, they're comfortable in their own neighborhood, so to speak, but they just happen to be homeless. So it really goes to the point of all the stuff that myself and Martha, Martha went to last year and the discovery that we know that, that public investment, if, if a lot of it is done, draws a lot of other development, which drives up rents and drives people out of the street. This is, this is a reality we're dealing with, but it's coming home in a very, very strong way. So I toured the, the other one, I didn't tour it, I actually looked at it Monday night, this Monday night, the one on 17th and McLaughlin in, in Portland. But it was a very nice shelter, they, they, from concept to, to opening the doors, they started the concept conceptually in October and of course, they opened it last week. So they, in a very relatively short timeframe, they were very successful. Last thing, and I'll be short today as best I can, I know that last week we spent a lot of time and did a lot of work on crafting that resolution on diversity and inclusion as it relates to adding some elements about the immigration stuff, we had a lot of great discussion. And when we were all done with that, when we took our short break, I, I talked to some of my colleagues up here, I said, you know, really, part that's not really in there is talking about, we shouldn't discriminate on party affiliation. And there was relatively agreement, at least in just this casual, you know, just talking while the break was happening. And it, and I, and I said, well, I didn't really want to bring that up because I really thought it was important that we didn't blur the, the, or the change of focus of what that, that meeting was about. But I do want to bring a resolution forward that actually acknowledges that, especially after what occurred yesterday in Washington DC. This, this hysteria and amplification of all this partisanship, when it, it is just creating, I think, for some people, some challenges. And when that, that results in, in harm to others, that's, it's clearly unacceptable. And I think that that needs to be embedded in that and that shouldn't happen really anywhere. And it was great to see some camaraderie in Washington DC, at least what I saw on the news last night, I stayed up last night, but I think it took a lot of people by surprise that someone would actually attack someone and, and, you know, I, I don't know what the status of, of that, that congressman is, but as last night, he was in critical condition as well as some, some law enforcement as well. So I'd like to move that, that forward. We got to remember that we are a nonpartisan county and we should recognize that, that's got some value to it, that we should be ought to be focused on the citizens of this county, which happened to be of all different affiliations and then none of any part of politics and that we really have a lot of needs out there. And when you spend all your time and you see all these people that are struggling, you don't have a roof over their heads and, or going hungry in, in children and the growing numbers, you know, we have a lot to focus on and I'm hoping that we can spend our time in, in getting a results oriented thing like our homeless shelter that we're working on and ones to follow and whatever we can do to people, but act that works, they don't need to be homeless. So it's a mouthful, but I, I, I look forward to, to working on that resolution.
Great, I think that'd be simple to bring it back and just making that quick amendment and I totally agree. So we're late for lunch, the problem with being last is I guess I'll be shorter. One thing about the legislative package on transportation, and I've heard this a million times, go big or times, go big or go home. We have a huge problem that needs to be addressed. It's going to take time, but go big or go home. The other thing that, you know, Paul mentioned, and I have some concerns about, is that one of the reasons gentrification occurs is passage of school bonds. The average impact on household in Portland on the last passage of the school bond is $400 a year. I mean, you add that to all the other things, that's a huge impact. We got to figure out a better way to pay for the capital maintenance and building of our schools rather than always putting the burden on the community to build them. With that, we're going to adjourn. So we're adjourned. Thank you.